Look at burning. Today is the twenty-ninth day of October. The Board of Commissioners is in session, all three Commissioners are present. If you could introduce yourself.
Bob T. Stack, Expo Idaho.
Don Bridge, Clerk's Office.
Tim Klein, Treasurer's Office.
Jeffrey Phillips, Operations.
Erin Brady, Assessors.
John Blake, Paramedics.
Kathy Corliss, Procurement.
Leon Letson, Development Services.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Breanna Hueste, Development Services.
Richard Beck, Development Services.
Josh Brown, Operations.
Bob Carney, Operations.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
I T guy.
Trent Tripleton, Clerk.
Well, thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there is one change to the agenda.
Okay, we'll accept the motion as it is.
Mr. Chairman, I move to change the agenda, amend the agenda inside twenty-four hours to add six, Roman number six, to ten catering permit for Heritage Social Club. This is one that came in late because of this processing problem at City of Kuna and Dina's office. The event is this Saturday, so.
Okay, well, is there a second motion?
Second.
Okay. Give her the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, it's nice we can fix a problem that we didn't create. Okay. Next, we have a special recognition, a outstanding plan award presentation. Could you read the recognition, Mr. Daly?
Award-winning plans for Park at Expo Idaho. You've likely heard about the Park at Expo Idaho, and you've heard even more in the coming months and years, you will hear more. When completed in two thousand and twenty-six, this fifty-eight-plus acre park will transform an area along the Boise River into a vibrant outdoor recreation area for everyone to enjoy. Plans for this destination park in Ada County at the corner of Glenwood Avenue and Chindon Boulevard, surrounded by the Garden City, were recognized with high honors at the American Planning Association Idaho Conference in Moscow, Idaho earlier this month. Ada County Leadership and Design Firm Port received the outstanding award for the Park at Expo Idaho. The outstanding plan award recognizes the planning effort that advances the science and art of planning while promoting awareness of its benefits. The award honors excellence in planning through public engagement and effective implementation. We are so proud of Ada County Development Services for shepherding this project from start to finish. While our Development Services Director, Richard Beck, and Operations Manager, Josh Brown, were the ones to receive the award at the conference, there have been many wonderful people involved in this great project who deserve recognition, from Ada County Procurement to Operations, to our legal staff, Parks and Waterways, and especially Expo Idaho. We are grateful for everyone who has contributed to this project since its inception. County staff and elected officials, and especially members of the community, have given important input through the public outreach process. We are excited to see this finished product, which we are. It's been a lot of work by a lot of people.
Yes, yes, and we named just a few of them, Development Services and Operations Team. So, do you want to get over here and get a picture? Did you get an actual award? Oh, let's see.
See the award too, yes.
Let's see the award and we'll take a picture with it. Get our team over here.
We're about to have some loss.
Need somebody to hold this?
Hey, young man, so you got the.
Oh, I'll take a picture.
Okay, here we go, come on, get in here.
We need some staggered people.
I was gonna say, you have to direct traffic.
Okay, come on.
Okay, so I'm gonna have.
Want one of us go over there?
I think we may all fit. It's always a challenge, but we make it work.
We make it work.
I still want to get feet and chairs and tables in there. Oh, actually, everybody's in here now, ready? One, two, three, nice, nice. Do you want to just text us? Yes, oh, do you want to get a little bit closer?
Sure.
Squeeze in, Leon.
Think then here.
No, you can just send it to me. I'll even take a picture.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Yes, you played job.
Okay.
See this award here.
Grown diamond.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, we have some unfinished business needs to be taken up. I'll accept a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, and further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Unfinished business. Final ranking and award of RFP two-five-zero-zero-three, ARPA Design Build for Ada County Coroner's Facility.
Photovoltaic project.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, today under unfinished business, we have three items, the first of which is this project, RFP two-five-zero-zero-three, ARPA Design Build, project for Coroner's Facility Photovoltaic Project. And the evaluation team has completed the evaluation of the proposal submitted, and we were prepared to make an award recommendation today, but we did receive a protest from EGT Solar in response to the award recommendation that we sent out last week. And this is their protest letter here for your review. Due to the protest, we're going, the evaluation team and the board will need to hold time to review the protest submitted. And so therefore, we'd like to retable the award recommendation to the November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four Open Business Meeting for further consideration. And in the meantime, we'll meet with you soon to discuss the protest and whether the protest has merit or not.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I move to table RFP two-five-zero-zero-three, ARPA Design Building for the Coroner's Office to November fifth Business Meeting.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, item B today is the review of a protest submitted by IMCO regarding bid two-four-zero-three-six, a stage-two ARPA Ada County Expo Idaho Park construction. And IMCO submitted a protest in response to our award recommendation that was sent out last week for this project. And here's their official protest letter. And so we were also prepared to make an award recommendation today, but because of this protest, items B and C, we would like to go ahead and retable for further consideration to the Thursday, October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four Open Business, or excuse me, the Open Meeting.
Ten thirty-one, that's Thursday.
That's Thursday, yeah.
Okay. I'll accept the motion.
Do we have a motion for both of them together, or just?
Yes, please.
Yep.
I'll move to table the review of the protest on bid two-four-zero-three-six, stage-two ARPA Ada County Expo Park, and award of bid.
We're not awarding it, we're tabling it till the thirty-first.
We're tabling that till October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
I second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there any question about the, the motion, the motion was to table the discussion of the protest till the thirty-first of October. Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Commissioners.
I'm sorry, Chairman Beck, do we need a second motion to also table the award?
I think we do.
Okay, I think we do.
We did get those together?
No, we didn't get them together.
No.
This was just the.
Yeah, when you both had these two.
All right, I'll accept the motion on the, on the, on the other one, the, the awarding of the bid.
Okay, I, I move to table the awarding of bid two-four-zero-three-six till the October thirty-first Business Meeting.
It's just an open meeting, it's not the business meeting. Okay.
Open meeting, yeah.
Second the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you.
Are we, are we?
Are we on track now?
Thumbs up, man, that's a good, it's always a good thing. Very now, I have installation, a reconsideration, a request for reconsideration for project number two-oh-two-four-zero-zero-three-one-four, Kirchner Holdings. We need to review that, we've reviewed that, we're going to be discussing it further, so I think we need to have a motion to, to table this to another day to consider it. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to table the request for consideration for project number two-zero-two four-zero-zero-three-one-four, CPA, ZC, DA, CU, MSP, Kirchner Holdings. Do we have a date?
Do you want it next Tuesday?
Yeah, next Tuesday, be fine.
So, November fifth.
Next Tuesday, November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, moving on. I'll open the public hearing on Resolution number three-oh-three-oh, Resolution Adjusting Ada County Budget to Reflect the Receipt of Unscheduled Revenue to the Ada County Emergency Rental Assistance Consolidated Appropriations. Okay. Is there any discussion on it? I'm gonna ask Don to give us a report.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, darn it, this is just a standard budget rollover for unspent funds for twenty-four, twenty-five, in the amount of four-seventeen, three-oh-one, thirty-two cents.
What's that?
Yeah, we're moved to the table.
Commissioner Davis would like to sit up here.
For ease of the clerk who are.
That's right.
My voice is a little quiet, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Make sure it's recorded, that's what Annie's saying.
It's a bigger old voice, okay. Would you like me to repeat that?
Yeah, repeat it, and then give us the, the, not only repeat what we, we've read the, the resolution, we know what it does, but what is the effect of, what's the four-hundred and seven thousand dollars, what does that be used for?
So, just to repeat, this is a budget rollover of ERA two, Emergency Rental Act two funds, in the amount of four-seventeen, three-oh-one, thirty-two, and we have earmarked this to be used as an additional contribution to an affordable housing project currently in the works with the city of Boise. Also, there's a development firm, and I do not recall the name, I apologize, so these funds will get sent on to the city, along with four point five that we have already allocated to that.
So that makes our contribution a little under, under five million.
That is correct.
Okay, all right, well, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution number three-oh-three-oh, and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to, to approve Resolution number three-oh-three-oh, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next up, I'll open public hearing on Resolution number three-oh-three-one, a resolution adjusting Ada County Budget to Reflect the Receipt of Unscheduled Revenue to the Local Assistance and Tribal Community Consistency Fund Budget. Any question or discussion on that one?
Well, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, just as the previous grant, this is also a budget rollover for unused or unallocated funds in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-four and forty-three cents. There is currently no purpose for this, it is a flexible use grant for, just to prepay the county for typical county services or, or activities, so, and it doesn't really have an expiration date, that's the lovely part about it, so, if you want to have those funds.
Okay, well, I'd ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution number three-zero-three-one, as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
I'll first close the public hearing on Resolution three-oh-three-one. Okay, let's do the motion again.
Move to approve Resolution number three-zero-three-one, as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next up, we have Resolution, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution three-oh-three-two, a resolution adjusting Ada County Budget to American Rescue Plan Act. Another one.
That's what, that's mine.
There you go, we're getting good at.
Yes, thank you. So, as mentioned before, this is also rollover funds for unspent ARPA funds, so they're not necessarily unallocated, but they are unspent. And this is covering a lot of wonderful projects throughout the county.
I agree.
One of which is this fabulous park that we just received an award.
That's right. All right, is there any other discussion on Resolution three-oh-three-two? Very now, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution three-oh-three-two, and call for a motion.
Chairman, I move to approve Resolution number three-oh-three-two, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. I'll open public hearing on Resolution three-oh-three-three, Resolution Adjusting Ada County Budget to Reflect Receipt of Unscheduled Revenue to the Ada County Operations Department Budget.
This is my last one, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this is actually the EECBG grant, the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant, I got it. And this was earmarked for the juvenile probation solar project, that is actually, they have completed installation, they are finishing up testing, anyone here wants to correct me on that, so it's almost done, at which point we will submit a voucher to get these funds reimbursed.
Okay. Well, I will close the public hearing on Resolution three-oh-three-three, and call for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve Resolution number three-oh-three-three, as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have, I'll open public hearing on Agreement number three-oh-three-four, Resolution to Soul Source Procurement of Installation Panic Buttons, Crested Systems, and Associated Equipment for the Ada County Courthouse, first-floor remodel. I think we'll have our clerk give us an update on that one.
Well, from what I understand, these need to be in compliance with the ones that we've had in there before, and because of the remodel, we're having to go out and get these specifically from this vendor, so that's essentially what it is.
Where are these panic buttons?
Well, it's probably not something I want everyone to know. Therefore, for clerks on the first floor, something gets out of hand when they're dealing with a public town.
Okay.
Is this not part of the original proposal?
It was, but it was contemplated as competing it, and we found out we can't compete it, so we have to go out and soul-source it, so it's just a slight adjustment to the, the whole construction project.
All right, any more questions? Do you want to offer anything?
Procurement?
Well said.
Okay.
Well represented.
All right, I mean, I'll break, okay. I'll close public hearing on Agreement number three-oh-three-four, call for a motion.
I move to approve Agreement number three-oh-three-four, as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Okay, now we have some catering permits and a couple of new licenses. Is there any question or discussion? We added the one, number ten, to the agenda. Is there any question or discussion on any of the alcohol licensing or new licenses? And license transfer? No, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the catering permits and the licenses as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Okay, now, we have, next up, we have with us, we are fortunate to have our distinguished clerk with us, Mr. Trent Triple. Go ahead.
I'm still here, alive and kicking, Mr. Chairman.
I don't see any kicking.
My legs are moving underneath.
Oh, okay.
The total number of absentees that request for this election are sixty-six thousand nine-hundred-and-thirty-three.
You undershot it by a couple thousand.
Yeah.
Wow.
Sixty-six thousand, how much?
Sixty-six thousand nine-hundred-and-thirty-four requests. Of those, forty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-seven have been returned so far, and we have voted fifty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-seven in-person early voting.
Fifty-one thousand what?
Fifty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-seven, ninety-two thousand votes.
Ninety-two thousand votes have already been placed.
Comparison to the primary this year, where we only cast sixty-two thousand for the entire election, we are seeing record turnouts early. Now, I can't say that that means there's going to be, compared to previous presidential elections, a lot more people voting, but I can say a lot more people are voting early in this.
I know you don't break them down, you don't, you don't count them till the day before election.
We don't count them till Election Day.
Till Election Day, but you prepare them all, so you can't count them, you can zip them through. Do you have it broken down by, by partisan affiliation and unaffiliated, you have, who, who's voted, how many?
There are those numbers, I don't have them with me right now, I have, the majority of absentees that were requested were, were combined between unaffiliated Democrat, just slightly more than Republicans. Now, that seems balanced, but generally speaking, Republicans have not requested that number of absentee ballots before, so there was a significant increase in the number of Republicans that have requested absentee ballots than previously.
And it follows a nationwide trend, it seems to me.
Yes.
What about the?
Same with early voting.
Yeah, yeah.
Predominantly, Republicans are showing up to vote early, by a large margin, and that's unusual. Generally, Republicans are voting on Election Day, so here locally, that's the case with us, so that's good news for us, in that, you know, we're hopeful, hopeful that that means lines will be down on Election Day, a presidential election on Election Day, as a lot of people show up, and with almost a third of our voters having already cast their vote.
Ninety-seven thousand is all were devoted.
Yeah, we're hoping that that will.
Hundred and ten thousand.
Ninety-two, between the forty-one and fifty. If all absentees come back in, it will be, it'll be higher. Currently, only forty-one thousand have returned.
There's twenty, there's twenty-five thousand, they haven't, they haven't returned their ballots yet.
Yeah.
And some of them may show up on Election Day.
They may, and some have already showed up and spoiled their absentee ballot and cast in person, so.
Could you have Ant and, no, Saul or somebody get, get that information on partisan breakdown of, of both early and absentee votes?
Yeah, you bet.
Appreciate it, thank you.
It's also on our website, so if you go to Elections.
You don't want to confuse me.
If, if I'm not around, you can't get ahold of me, the website has.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Other things that are, I think are important to clarify, there's been some news coverage recently about absentee people, the ability to still request an absentee ballot, that is not a true statement, and I want to clarify that for.
Let's cut off on Friday, wasn't it?
Friday, the twenty-fifth was the last day. You can still, if you haven't registered to vote, you can register, but you have to register in person, either on early voting or on Election Day. We have six locations open from eight to five the rest of this week for early voting, and then on Election Day, the polls will open at eight and close at eight, so those are important things to remember. You can also look at your sample ballot, there's two different ways to do it, if you're already registered, you can go on the Secretary of State's website, if you want to go to our website at Ada County, you can look up your address, and it'll show you what your sample ballot is, meaning what's on your ballot, and it'll also show you where you can vote on Election Day, as well as early voting, if you want to take advantage of that. So, lots of good stuff happening, and we're excited, we're in a good, a good space right now, I think, election-wise, we're fully manned, fully staffed, and we're just right now in a little bit of react mode, when people show up with bad information at places, like, you know, what they're need to register to vote, apparently, there's some other things going around out there that says you don't need an Idaho driver's license to register to vote, and that's an incorrect statement, the law's very specific on a current Idaho driver's license.
That's Idaho law, and that's probably where that's coming from, nationwide, some states don't require that.
Yeah.
So, I've had a few people recently move, you know, last few months, haven't got the Idaho driver's license yet, what, are they able to register some other way?
There is, you can use a US passport, a federal ID, a tribal card, or a concealed weapon is the other ID that you can use to be able to go register to vote. So, and if, if you, yeah, Idaho driver's license, you can get a schedule, a scheduled appointment there and still get in, I don't know what it's like in the next three days.
You don't actually get your, your card, you get a, you get a receipt.
You get a receipt, and that's still valid.
That's still valid.
That's still valid.
Okay. Anything else?
That is it.
Okay, well, grateful, well, thank you, I'm sure you're gonna have a fun day or two. Are all the cages, when, when do the cages get delivered?
Cages will be delivered generally on Monday to the voting locations, and then they'll be set up either Monday evening or Tuesday morning, ready for the precincts to operate.
And you're fully staffed on the, on the.
Fully staffed.
All the election room, that's, that's pretty good, if we can get, because we have.
That many, yeah.
One hundred and ninety, one hundred and ninety-seven precincts?
Hundred and ninety-seven precincts at a hundred and sixty locations.
At a hundred and sixty locations, that's a lot of, lot of votes.
It's a lot of people.
Well, that's good.
So, did you have a good volunteer?
We did have a good volunteer effort, we did have some outreach that we did, and it was very successful, and our, our biggest victory, I think, this year is that we're not using temp staff for Election Day type of stuff. We were able to get a lot of our in-county workers, as well as some volunteers, to be able to come in and help us with that, and that helps with continuity, it keeps costs down too, because.
Well, yeah, we don't pay the upcharge.
And temp services, they don't have the experience.
Right.
To be able to do this, so it's a, it's a add bonus for us to be able to have that cadre come back every election, be able to do that, so we've had a lot of people volunteer within the county, which has been great.
So, how many people would you, would you guess is, is it takes for Ada County to run the election?
About.
On Election Day?
About fifteen-hundred, a hundred people or less.
Fifteen hundred people. And now, does that include the crew that you have down at Election Office?
That would include.
Do they take them in and get the ballots prepared to be?
That would be everybody.
Yeah. All right.
And what's the process if somebody wants to watch on Election Day, the counting process?
You can watch from the comfort of your own home, we have cameras all over our warehouse that show the whole process, but if you want to come into our Elections Warehouse, there's a public viewing area that you can watch the whole processes from.
Public knows that everything's gonna be very transparent.
And if you want to look at the ballots afterwards, you can look on Ball Verifier.
How soon afterwards are they available to look at, immediately, or takes a while?
I'm gonna under-promise and over-deliver on this one, but generally, it's about three to four weeks.
Yeah.
Before we have those up. before we have those up and people can view them. There is some miscommunication out there. People think that as soon as they cast their ballot, they can go on and view it. So we've got a lot of people calling us saying, well, I can't get on and see my ballot.
You can see your ballot from two years ago.
You can. But we don't open ballots until election day. So while you may have already cast it, no one has actually seen your ballot because it hasn't been tabulated. So that's an important thing for public to remember. It's not until election day that we actually are able to see what those things are.
Have you had the process where candidates or anybody from the press can go in? You do a run-through of a couple of ballots, do it?
Our public logic and accuracy test, that's this Thursday, two o'clock.
Oh, okay. So anybody who wants to go see it, they can.
Anybody that wants to come see that can.
Generally, candidates participate, but anybody can go see it, right?
I'd say historically speaking, only the media shows up to that.
Oh, I've been a candidate, I've shown up for it.
You were the minority.
Well, I get that.
But candidates and campaigns, parties, they all know that's happening and if they'd like to show up.
And to be clear, what you do is you run through a couple of ballots at a pre-mark and then you check them on, run through the machine, then you check them.
We have a test deck of sample ballots that we put through the machines to make sure the software and the hardware is calculating properly. I have hand counted all of those ballots prior, and we compare them to the machine count. And then hopefully, that gives the public confidence that all of our equipment and software is working properly to record the correct ballot.
Well, good, well, thank you.
You bet.
Very instructive, I hope.
People who are listening, if you had questions, you may have that question.
Do you know if all the absentee ballot requests have been logged into the computer, the website?
They have. Anything that's been requested has been put in, and as of yesterday, all those ballots have been sent out.
They were sent out to the mailhouse, they may or may not have been delivered.
They may not have been shown up in a.
Post office box. Because they've been sent to the mailhouse.
And it's important for those that have absentee still, don't put them in the mail on Friday or Saturday. I would recommend you deliver those to one of our twenty-four-hour monitor drop boxes and put those in because we have to have your absentee ballot by eight PM on election day.
That's the law.
That's the law. If it's postmarked, it doesn't matter. I need to have that in my hands by eight PM on election day if I have to count it.
Yeah, that's good clarification, because some places postmarks.
Some people, they count, they just count the postmarks, because that's why they have to wait. But not in Idaho, it's, you have to actually have them at hand. All right, any other questions before we move on? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we next have up the Claims Journal, which allows the clerk's office to pay our claims.
Any questions? I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the claims on the Claims Journal dated October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have Personnel Actions. I'll accept the motion on Personnel Actions.
I move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have the Assessors' Office.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you today?
Doing well.
Thank you.
Brad is at a Board of Tax Appeals hearing this morning, so I'm filling in for him. This week, we've got our admin staff working to get twenty twenty-four PTR certified, which hopefully will go smoothly. I believe the Tax Commission certified levies yesterday, I hope. That should make PTR certification go more smoothly.
Tell us PTR, what does that mean?
Property tax reduction.
And that comes from the state when they have, yes.
Yep.
I just want to curb that up so people, if anybody's watching, you know what PTR is.
Thank you for noting that.
All right, thank you.
Subsequent rule assessment notices should be hitting the mailboxes this week. These are mostly new construction occupancies, the vast majority of them are. Hopefully, we are able to manage them all internally without having to end up in any appeal hearings for you all to decide. So that's a much smaller role, much smaller appeal count. So I'm sure that will go smoothly. The only other thing we have going on right now, we're getting ready to launch our online reappraisal survey. We're about halfway through our reappraisal process, forty-seven thousand parcels are under reappraisal. Half of those will receive a postcard inviting them to participate in the online reappraisal survey, which is basically just asking property owners to confirm whether the record we have is correct or not. So it's just another tool we have to make sure that our reappraisal goes smoothly and that we're cleaning up any errors that we have in the data.
Okay.
That's about all we have going on right now.
Looks like you got a whole handful of tax cancellations.
Yep, those are homestead exemption appropriations. We have a couple exemptions that were managed there and then one casualty loss as well.
Yeah, yeah, I like to remind people that these tax cancellations are really just adjustments with the protocol and tax cancellations, and so that's what we actually call them. And one of them is a casualty loss.
Yep.
Okay, well, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the tax cancellations as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Hey, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, next up, we have the Treasurers' Office.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. First off, I'd like to express our appreciation to the Assessors' Office for doing such a good job in getting all these tax cancellations adjustments. And I know they really pushed hard because after this week, I think we got eighty-seven here, after this week, there may be a handful on next Tuesday. But after that point, because we'll be doing the tax charge, we'll have to do these manually. So all of these that we've been seeing each week, we're able to do what we call a process through the grid, which is kind of a big, large batch instead of doing these individually, it really helps us out, it's a big time saver. So other than that, our big push this past week and going into these next few days is first off, we'll be taking care of these, and then we're doing testing and preparing for the tax charge that we intend to do next Thursday. So that's what we've been working on, and it's consuming a lot of our time, but we've been testing and getting ready for it because we want that to go smoothly.
Great. Now, the legislature did clear up a little bit, made it a little simpler, didn't they, to do the PTR, ATA?
The ATR, that's been eliminated, which is great. Both of those are very complicated, and that's part of the reason we're doing such extensive testing. But the ATR is gone now, we still have the PTR. And so, yes, they did do some cleanup work, it made it much more simple for us.
Well, that's great, that's great. Anything else for us? Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we have the approval of the minutes. We have several minutes to approve. I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next up, we have three interim events at Expo Idaho. Any question or discussion on the interim events? I'll accept the motion if there's none.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agreements as listed on the agenda for Expo Idaho, Western Idaho Fair, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you have a motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you, motion carries. Next up, we have Barbara Park Education and Event Center. We have three events on that center as well. I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the Barbara Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have agreements, there are twenty-nine agreements. So most of these agreements are renewals or, yeah, most of them are renewals. The ones with the counties, they are not a renewal, but they're the same thing as a renewal. For pathology services and work with the Coroner's Office. Is there any question or discussion on any of these amendments or agreements?
Chair?
Yes.
Bob, do you want to talk about the construction of the Ada County Education Center at the landfill?
That's definitely the project manager, if she wants to talk about that. Yeah, it's just, they're redesigning the building so they can bring kids in to educate them on landfill and repurposing. They do a lot of repurposing and taking material and creating pieces with it as well, or taking material and building desks. They're rebuilding desks for the building itself as well. So they won't be getting any furniture, they're going to be building it all. So it's all going to be just repurposing and teaching kids about repurposing and recycling. So it's going to be a really great project.
Yeah, I think so. Any other questions on any of the agreements?
Just a couple of notes, as you said, the pathology agreements, eleven of these are pathology agreements. We do that for thirty-three counties.
Yeah, there's eleven counties that are, there's thirty-three counties that we do the autopsies and pathology work for them. We're glad to be good partners.
And then we're going to have EMS here shortly, but one of these agreements is between Eagle, Murray, all the cities and our EMS, that's a simple thing for our county, which a lot of counties don't have, but we do.
Yeah. That's one of our agreements as well, we're fortunate, we have that agreement. All right, any other questions? Not, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agreements as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have the Indigent Services. Any question on any of the Indigent Services? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to accept the recommendations of the Indigent Services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. During your business needs to be brought for the board, yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I have those numbers if you'd like.
Oh, oh, sure, I would like.
For in-person early voting, the fifty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-seven that have voted so far, thirty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-nine of them are Republican. For, that's sixty-three percent of the early voting turnout. Ten thousand nine hundred and two are unaffiliated, and seven thousand six hundred and twenty-seven are Democrat. For absentees.
How many are Democrat, I guess, seven thousand, you said?
Seven thousand six hundred and twenty-seven. For absentee, of the sixty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-four ballots that have been issued, twenty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-three are Republican. Eighteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-three are unaffiliated, and sixteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-one are Democrat.
What about the ones that have been returned? You know those?
I don't have that breakdown. Those are just the ones that are requested. For rate of return, that's a sixty-three percent current rate of return. We'll know those affiliations on election day probably, for those that have been returned.
Okay, well, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Then if there's any business needs to be brought for the board, not, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Today is the twenty-ninth day of October. The time is nine forty-four. The Board of Commissioners, sitting as the Board of Ada County Emergency Medical Services District, is in session, all three Commissioners are present. We also have with us.
John Blake, paramedics.
And regular IT guy. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
No changes to the agenda, all right? Well, once in a while, we get there.
That'd be a regular one.
Well, again, yeah, once in a while, yeah. Is there no change to the agenda? So then our first item is the Claims Journal. I'll accept a motion on the Claims Journal.
I move to approve the EMS Claims Journal as listed on the agenda for October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is Personnel Actions. I'll accept a motion on the Personnel Actions.
I'll move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, motion carries. Now we have the approval of the minutes from October first, October fifteenth, October seventeenth, and October twenty-second. I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes for EMS as listed on the agenda for October first, October fifteenth, October seventeenth, and October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have five agreements. Any question or issues with any of the agreements? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
Well, I'll move to approve the agreements as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have the EMS update. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I only have one thing for you today, and it's pretty exciting news. The Resuscitation Academy Lighthouse Community is an organization that provides education and grant funding to organizations across the country with the goal of improving outcomes for people who've experienced cardiac arrest. They, at the request or the suggestion of one of our medical directors, we submitted an application to this organization that took quite a bit of work. And then they sent two evaluators to look at our system, Ada County Paramedics and our partners, as well as our association with the hospital, our dispatch protocols, our education, everything that goes into this organization. And they assessed Ada County paramedics and our system partners to be elite and designated as us as such. And that means that we became the eleventh such designee in the United States.
Eleven elites.
That's right. There are ten others that have been designated by this organization. We are the eleventh. When we received that notification almost immediately, two of the other members of this designated group wrote to congratulate us. It turns out to be an exceptionally big deal. Boiled down, what it means is if you are unfortunate enough to experience cardiac arrest in Ada County, your chances of survival here are among the best in the country. And for our organization, you can't reach that level, you can't reach that peak without all the pieces being in place, from logistics and supply and durable medical equipment to procedures and process, to top shelf staff, an educational process, and all the other bits and pieces that have to go together to put our service at a place where a person has experienced cardiac arrest and have them have that kind of chance at a really good outcome. It is one of the things that we do, not with great frequency, but our success rate as assessed by this organization is a significant achievement. And kind of as an aside, we've been doing this for years. We've just been recently. We we've just been recently um designated as elite, but the truth is that we've been doing this for a long time.
What's the most critical portion of that? Is it response time or or the equipment and the staffing?
So so it's an interesting, um there's an interesting part about response times. Um there are some parts of EMS where response times don't necessarily matter, but this is one of the places where.
That's why I asked questions.
Response time.
I know that uh cardiac arrest is really important.
Response time for effective CPR and defibrillation, those are the two things that are the most critical. Uh and the quicker that you can begin those, um better off, so.
That's because when you get it, when when someone calls nine-one-one, they notify them that this is a cardiac arrest, or they think it is.
Right, and then.
So that that allows you to.
All the way into our dispatch protocols where our units are sent immediately upon detection of of cardiac arrest, and then all the subsequent questions are asked after, after they get the units.
Okay. Well, congratulations. That's a, that's an honor, and and uh notify your staff, and we appreciate it.
Uh certainly will.
Congratulate that.
Certainly will.
Congratu- do you get a certificate or something, or or what, you get just a notification, or?
Uh I'm not sure what the, if there is a physical something or other that comes, this, it it just happened, and so I I'm not sure.
If you could find out, if you could find out about that, because we'd like to maybe maybe uh acknowledge acknowledge that, and and find out if there is a, if there's a a certificate, or if there's a little trophy you get, or whatever it is, because I think the people who med count should know that.
Definitely.
We are amongst the elites with cardiac cardiac arrest.
Right, I did, I think it was Seattle's medic one that was one of the, I believe they're one of the initial member members in this group, and we are right there alongside them.
Well, that's great. Congratulations, and then notify your staff that we are pleased, and find out if you do have, I don't know what the certification is, but find out, if you can find out about.
Yeah, certainly will.
Appreciate that.
I think we're.
And we'll note, we'll notify uh people in a way, but but if we do, if if there is some some a certificate or something, we can.
We plan to 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 put this out as well.
Yep.
Few questions. One is where, where's the organi- where's where's the Lighthouse organization? Secondly, what what who are the other? Who who were, what what group did you get elevated into?
Uh well.
The not, like Boston.
The group that just into this community of people, there's a designation that, I I don't even know what the designation is yet, but they, the assessment is of an elite group of people, all the way from Anchorage down to, I can't remember where the organization is in Florida. There's somebody in Georgia, there's somebody in Maryland.
That's where it was, where the location.
They're, yeah, they're all, they're all over the country. And but there are only eleven of them, so it's still pretty sparsely located, and if I'm honest, I don't even know yet where the organization is based. I absolutely should. Jeremy Shavit, Chief Shavit, has the Education Department and his um his team put the application together and handled the the on-scene inspection. They sent two inspectors to look. Uh that's right, this was, it wasn't just an application. Somebody came and looked at our policies and our procedures, they looked at our equipment, they looked at our education, our educational records, they assessed, uh I believe, dispatch and our association with our partners. So it was a, it was a comprehensive assessment of our capabilities.
Great.
Alright.
Well, thank you.
You bet you do.
Yeah.
We all, we all do that anyway.
Alright. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else needs to be brought up?
We're adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you.